Everyone, the time is 5:30. I'd like to be mindful of all of your time. If you could please prepare yourselves to begin our meeting, I would appreciate it. Thank you. The time is 5:31. I will officially call our meeting to order. Mr. Petrowski, could you please do the roll call?
Ms. Daniels?
Here.
Ms. Green? Mr. Madsen?
Here.
Mr. Majors?
Here.
Ms. Rawls?
Here.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Present.
Ms. Bowers?
Present. Thank you. We will begin our work session this evening with work from the Administration Committee. Mr. Petrowski, could you please read Resolution 15 of 2022 into the record?
Resolution 15 of 2022 is a resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional services agreement with Halcyon Interpreting Services LLC to provide sign language interpreting services.
Thank you. Before we hear from the Administration, I did receive a written statement from the owner of Halcyon Interpreting Services LLC. So I will read that now. It's dated March 15, 2022. Madam President and members of the Council, my name is Gloriana McGellany. I am the owner of Halcyon Interpreting Services LLC. My apologies that I cannot appear in person before you tonight. Halcyon Interpreting Services has been in the Harrisburg area since 2014. We provide qualified American sign language interpreters, both in person and virtually. Most recently, we provided the interpreters for the York County Virtual Pride Festival, enabling access for all members of the community. I know that President Bowers will want to ask about diversity of personnel. Our interpreters are subcontractors and not employees. We try to connect with interpreters of all genders, ages, races, et cetera. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to provide accessibility thus far, and I hope for continued good business relations. Signed, Gloriana McGellany, Halcyon Interpreting Services. Mr. Grover, if you could please provide an overview of Resolution 15 of 2022, please?
Certainly, Madam President. I will note that this is a contract that was initiated by a request of City Council to have interpreters at these proceedings. It's a fairly simple, straightforward agreement. It's an hourly rate agreement. It's my understanding that there's been determination that these interpreters will be provided at legislative sessions from here on out. The rates are based on both time of day. They go up after 7:00 p.m. if we are keeping people here past 7:00 p.m. So it's $55 an hour from up till 7:00 p.m., $60 an hour after 7:00 p.m. In the case of emergency, it would be $80 an hour, but that's not anticipated that that would occur. This agreement can be extended for a limited period, but my understanding is although it's within Council's request, it will be funded out of the Administration for a contracted services provision. I believe it's going to be managed out of a combination of the Finance Office and the Business Administrators Office. I think because February's budget hearings, which I'm sure you're aware, used a significant portion of that initial appropriation. If it gets to the point where there is a risk of it being exhausted, you know, that it will probably come back very quickly for an allocation unless it goes to another contracted services provision. There are a number of those in the city budget. But I truly hope the Council to say that whether they're satisfied or not with the agreement and the services, I think it's been well received, at least from everything I have heard from the Administration and from a few members of the public.
Thank you very much. Before opening up the floor for questions from my colleagues, I just wanted to note that the agreement will expire on December 31 of 2022. At this time, I will open the floor for questions from my colleagues. I will begin with Councilwoman Rawls. Do you have any questions on Resolution 15?
Thank you, President Bowers, and good evening, everyone, and I have no question.
Thank you. Councilman Madsen, any questions?
No questions for me, thank you.
Thank you. Vice President Green, any questions?
Just one question. How do we choose the vendor?
I believe they made a proposal to City Council.
They did. This vendor came highly recommended from members of the deaf and hard of hearing community within the city. I think that they are very present and they have relationships with members of our city.
Thank you. That's the only question I had.
Thank you. Councilman Majors, any questions?
Oh, no questions.
Thank you. Councilwoman Daniels, any questions?
Yes, so just for clarification, with sign language interpreters, it's always preferable to have two so they could give each other breaks. Does the $55 an hour include, is it for two interpreters or is it for one at a time?
I think it's just for the evening. So if there's two interpreters, we're not paying them to sit here that I know of. Frankly, I'm not managing this contract. So, you know, I think your office, I think, received the initial invoices, the City Council office. So I actually don't know whether we're paying someone to be here, and it may be we're paying for both because they are taking their time in the evening to both be here. I understand it's physically and accuracy is what really dictates having two people for a meeting like this, so.
I don't know the answer to that, but I can certainly contact the owner to figure out.
The invoices will simply tell us. They'll tell us if it was a four-hour meeting, we'll rebuild for eight because there were two people here. I mean, so it'll answer itself, so.
I think that's it for me.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Rodriguez, any questions?
Madam President, no questions for me.
Thank you. This concludes the work of the Administration Committee. I would like to move that Resolution 15 of 2022 to be added to our legislative session agenda for a formal vote. Next, we will have the work of the Public Safety Committee. I will defer the floor to Councilman Rodriguez.
Good evening, everyone. Mr. Petrowski, can you read the resolution, please?
Sure. Resolution 16 of 2022 is a resolution approving the disposition of surplus equipment and vehicles which have exhausted their useful life for the city operations by bureaus of fire and police.
Thank you for that. Is someone here? I see Chief Enaline getting up. Thank you. Chief Enaline, if you wouldn't mind going over the resolution as a whole and just explaining further?
Sure. As everyone should be aware, we've made a significant financial investment in the Fire Bureau for new equipment and tools over the past five, six years. And through that, we've accumulated a pile of equipment that is now past its useful life and no longer has use in the Fire Bureau. I think, you know, as we look down through it, the three biggest things are a Pace American trailer, a KME tower truck that failed inspection due to rusting on the frame, and a Ford passenger van that was used by Fire Safety that was actually given us back in, I want to say, 2009 or 2010 that we no longer need in our fleet. Everything we've put on our disposition list has been inventoried by myself and the deputy chiefs. And we like to send everything with the exception of the van, which was actually donated to us. There's a volunteer fire company in Lancaster County that would like to have that, and so we'd like to donate that to their fire company for use in water rescue.
Thank you for that. Before I pass it to my colleagues, a question I had was, is that the only targeted partner that so far that we can donate items to or that we're willing to donate as far as the van?
Yeah, so under the third-class city code, either has to go to a nonprofit or auctioned off. And everything else, quite frankly, is scrap.
Thank you for that. And I'll take it to my far right with Councilwoman Rawls. If she has any questions?
Thank you, Councilman Rodriguez. I don't have any questions. Thank you. It was outlined very well in the memo, so I didn't have any further questions. Thank you.
People did a good job.
Yes, it was. I understood it very well.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rawls.
You're welcome.
Councilman Madsen?
No questions for me, thank you. It seems pretty straightforward.
Thank you. Councilwoman Green?
Thank you. I don't have any questions on this.
President Bowers?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Councilman Majors?
No questions. Thank you.
You. Councilwoman Daniels?
No questions.
All right. Thank you. With no questions being heard, I recommend Resolution 16 of 2022 to be put on the agenda. Thank you. I pass it back over to Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman Rodriguez. Next, we will have the work of the Parks, Recreation, and Enrichment Committee, Councilwoman Rawls.
Thank you, President Bowers. Mr. Petrowski, can you please read Resolution 13 of 2022 and?
Resolution 13 of 2022 is a resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to enter into a landowner-grantee agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection, allowing the Capital Area Green Belt Association to install conservation practices, best management practices on the city's property for the purpose of improving water quality in spring creek.
Thank you, Mr. Petrowski. Is there anybody here from the Administration who can speak further on this? Good evening. Can you please state your name and your position, not just for myself, but for the residents who are watching? Thank you. And can you please, is it on here?
This is a grant that is actually, the city is not the applicant. The Capital Area Green Belt Association is the applicant. This is a growing greener grant that they have to rehabilitate some of the stream bed around the Ivy Lane Apartments. Sort of, I have maps that I can gladly send. They weren't not printing out very well. Sort of right on the border between Harrisburg and Swat era. So what, in June of 2021, the previous mayor signed a letter of commitment that just allowed the grant to go forward. Now that the grant has been awarded, they need this landowner agreement document because the land, some of the land on which they want to do the work is owned by the city. That is what this is for.
So in other words, you said the city did not, I couldn't hear you well when it was. Yeah, I couldn't.
So they needed a commitment letter, which the previous mayor signed in June of 2021. Now that the grant has been awarded, they need this actual landowner agreement letter that allows the Capital Area Green Belt to go ahead and do this work on some of the property of this project is owned by the city.
Okay, so that's the city's part in it, is some of it is owned by the city?
Yeah, but that's really our only part in this particular one.
And with the grant, if the grant gets passed, we don't own any?
Right. No money from us. They've raised the match and they have now the grant from Pennsylvania DEP, Growing Greener. All the financing is done and we don't have to engineer the project or deliver it or anything. We just have to let them make our property better.
Okay, thank you. So I'm gonna see if any of my fellow members have questions. I'm gonna start to my far left with Councilman Rodriguez. Do you have any questions?
No questions on this particular resolution. Thank you, Chair.
You're welcome. Councilwoman Daniels, do you have any questions?
Not for this.
Councilman Majors, do you have any question?
No, no questions on this. Thank you.
You're welcome. President Bowers, do you have any questions?
No, thank you.
Vice President Green, do you have any questions?
No, I don't have any questions on this. It seems pretty simple. Thank you.
And Councilman Madsen, do you have any questions?
No questions for me, thank you.
So I move to please have this placed on the agenda for our legislative session, please. And Mr. Petrowski, can you please read in Resolution 17 of 2022?
Resolution 17 of 2022 is a resolution authorizing the submission of a grant application to the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources, C2P2 Community Recreation and Conservation Planning Subprogram for up to $100,000 to help fund a Harrisburg City Parks Master Plan.
Thank you, Mr. Petrowski. And you are saying from the Administration? So can you please give us an overview on this?
You bet, you bet. So this is the first of three DCNR grant application resolutions that you'll see tonight. This is, I think, the most straightforward. The overall budget, we believe, expect for this is about $200,000. The DCNR applications require a one-to-one match, so our ask for this would be $100,000. Mr. Baker could speak about where the match will come from, from the city coffers. This is to create a master plan of all, the entire park system of Harrisburg. We got really close to getting money for this last year and didn't. And we were all sort of heartbroken, so we're trying again. But the idea is to have a master plan in the way that we have a Reservoir Park Master Plan and we have an Aquatics Master Plan to look at this whole park system as a whole, kind of this holistic, organic, almost like a creature, and think about all the parks in connection with each other. So we're not just fixing one park one year and another park another year, but we're really thinking about the whole thing as an entity that serves the whole city and try to think about things like balance and equity and accessibility and create a plan that not only do we bring all the parks up together as sort of a whole, but we also think in a smart way about how do we fund things that we need, both like small, immediate needs and like much bigger overarching issues with the parks.
Thank you very much. Mr. Baker, do you have anything to add as an overview?
I think Rebecca probably summed it up much better than I could. So I see this as our vessel to get continuous funding. Something like this is absolutely necessary. If we don't do a plan such as this, it's one year we look for a park project and how to map that out, and then the next year we go for the grant asked for it, and so on and so forth. So it's so slow. If we typically do it that way, the parks degrade much faster than we can grant, fund them, to rebuild them. So something like this will allow us to do multiple projects in one single shot and continuously do those projects, no matter, you know, the time period. It's just, it's a no-brainer right here, too.
And that's a really, the economy of scale is a really, really good point. And it's also true, as we apply for grants, DCNR is a perfect example. They love plans, so they love to see that we have a master plan so that we're moving ahead and raising money in a way that's strategic and sort of well-thought-out, not just like, oh, here's a grant, we have a park. Maybe we'll fit together. So the kind of master plan as a benefit to the success of our grant applications is really important.
Thank you very much. I have no questions. So I'm gonna go to my far left with Councilman Rodriguez, and do you have any question?
No questions on this. Thank you, Chair Rawls.
You're welcome. Councilwoman Daniels, do you have any question?
Yes, but didn't we already have one of these before?
We tried. We sure tried.
Okay, we submitted the application.
Yeah, we got all the way to, and we actually had an interview on Zoom and we did a video and we thought we were there, but they didn't select us.
And then, since this is really about parks and I wanted to, this isn't related to the grant, this is probably more for you, Mr. Baker. What's the status of the tree planting project in Reservoir Park? That was supposed to happen in last fall, but it got cold too soon. Have any updates on that? And how does that fit in?
So I actually have a decent amount of paperwork on that. And after the meeting, if you'd like to go over that, I'd be happy to kind of go into detail on the areas where we still need information before we can move forward with that. We've been requesting for a few months now. And then also the city side of what the city is going to be contributing to that program as well, so.
I thought that was all resolved last fall. And all that was left was execution, since, I mean, the process would affect it, the execution of that.
It was not resolved. It was discussed. There was not a city commitment match-wise. So there's a grant that's relatively modest. I think it's $5,000 for the trees. But then there's a proposal that I think came in to do this whole maintenance and cleaning up of all of that, which is much more substantial, hard tax dollars. And that is still being discussed, as I understand it internally, on how to fund that, how to man that. It's 82 trees, if I understand the proposal correctly. So the $5,000 was granted by Chesapeake Bay. But the other part of it, which is frankly much more expensive and involved, has not been resolved. And that's where the city's money comes in.
Just to clarify just a little bit, this is about the Living Memorial. So I am in talks with the people who are gonna be working with that and creating a Zoom meeting for that to get some updates and some clarification. Yeah, you're welcome. Is that all your questions, Councilwoman? No, it's okay. I just wanted to throw in some clarification in there. We're gonna talk about. Councilman Majors, do you have any questions?
I guess just one. So I know we've looked at and already done some rehabilitation and construction of parks. How does work that's already been completed factor into this overall master plan?
Yes, I mean, as far as any sort of hindrance to anything like that, I mean, absolutely. It's not gonna slow anything down. The way I like to think of these master plans is, again, it's, to me, it's a it just, it makes sense as far as the parks that we did. We partnered with CRW and we got funding from DCNR and a number of different entities. And, I mean, that's the way it should be. That's the way, you know, we'd like to see it. But it's, it can be very slow if we do that. So this project or this endeavor is not going to be affected by those parks other than the fact that we will take into account the fact that those parks are now, you know, uplifted. Right? So we won't say, okay, there's a disparity study and it's showing that this park needs a ton of care and there's X amount of kids that uses of this age group. That's just gonna be like, hey, we're good in this area, but now we need to focus more in this area over here, so.
And I guess we'll continue partnerships with Capital Region Water and other entities moving forward?
Absolutely. I mean, unfortunately, you know, $250,000 doesn't
Doesn't stretch long for parks, I understand. Thank you. No further questions.
Thank you, Councilman Majors. Madam President, do you have any questions?
Thank you. I just have one question. So you mentioned that we applied last year. We were very close, Zoom interview, video, all the things. Did DCNR provide any indication of what may have been missing from our application or areas where we can ensure that we're meeting their criteria for this year?
Such a good question. The application we sent last year was actually not to DCNR. It was to NRPS, which is actually a private funding, it's sort of, it's a nonprofit funding organization that brings together different sources of funding. And they had, it was a national nationwide search. They narrowed it down to 10. They were one of those 10, and that's where we got to do the interview. They were very, very strongly looking for equity. It was all, it was very much about sort of demographic and economic and ethnic equity to parks. And we made the best case we could that we're working on those issues, but I just think we weren't the strongest of folks who, they chose, I think, three out of the 10. And they were very big grants. There were $500,000 to a million dollar grants, which is a lot. So they were only funding a few. And I just think we, obviously, our need and our park system is fantastic and we have these amazing resources. And the need is clearly there. I just think we weren't able to make the case that we had the strongest, most creative approach to really bringing equity into our parks. And that was kind of the, that was the bright line test for that grant. From what I understand, DCNR, especially our regional coordinator, Ms. Lori Ike, is very strongly behind all three of the applications we're putting in this year. So very hopeful that these will be successful. She's given us some indications that DCNR is really behind us. We've been working with her very closely for the last several months now on these. I'm hoping our chances for success are very high.
Okay, so just a follow-up then. How are we working toward a more equitable park system within the city?
So this is part of that, and again, I'm gonna let Mr. Baker speak more to that, but this is a step in that direction, is looking at all the parks altogether. Where are they located? What is access like? And are there buses that go to parks? And can people who don't necessarily live near Riverfront Park, can they get there easily? This is something that will look at all those kinds of questions in this, again, overarching holistic kind of way.
So again, I think Rebecca kind of answered the question pretty well there. That's, again, one of the bigger pictures of these large-scale park programs is they're not gonna get into the nuts and bolts of each individual park. We're still gonna have to do a study when we're ready to do that park or have, you know, designs created for that individual park. This is gonna be more about, you know, doing the sustainability and the feasibility and being equitable to everyone within the city and making sure that the people with the most need get taken care of first, not necessarily the most popular area. I mean, that's, doing this study is how we make sure we take care of items, such as, you know, what you're speaking of. That's really the best way I can say we do it. That's part of the point of these studies.
Okay, thank you. I would just like to note that I know the Chutes and Ladders playground has been a strong talking point a lot lately, but I would love to see an All Abilities playground in the city. Thank you.
So as far as All Abilities, do you mean like handicap ADA, different age groups, all that?
Yes, sensory, all of it.
And that is something that we are striving to do. Even at the Chutes and Ladders, we have a tot lot that we're putting in. We should have like a zero-entry play area, so you can go from the parking lot and actually roll a wheelchair into the play structure itself. So, I mean, we're definitely keeping that in mind. As far as Chutes and Ladders, just a grade change is not gonna be too conducive to someone with certain disabilities, but we're definitely making sure we keep in mind certain areas should absolutely accommodate individuals of all different abilities.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Vice President Green, do you have any questions?
Thank you. I don't have really many questions. I guess this is something that as a planning commission, we kind of spoke about having like a master park plan as we were working on the comprehensive plan for the city. And I think we really spoke about it more and how creating a master plan can really increase our different modes of transportation within the city, making the city more walkable if you map out how you can connect your different parks throughout the city and create bicycle paths and things like that so that people can get throughout the city a lot more easily and a lot more safely, especially as we're looking at Zero Vision and different things. So I definitely think it's a need that we have for the city and I look forward to it. And seeing how we can incorporate the different needs of the city, not just from a park aspect, but also how it can meet transportation needs, safety needs, and things like that. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Green. Councilman Madsen, do you have any question?
No, my colleagues asked most of the questions I would have asked. Glad to see we're applying for this again, sad that we didn't get it last time. I guess my question is, could Representative Kim be of any assistance? Yeah.
Yeah, we are asking Representative Kim and DeSanto for letters and other letters from around the community, for sure.
Okay.
Yeah, support letters, yeah.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. My colleagues did a great job asking questions. I don't have any further ones, but I do look forward to this. I do think it's something we need. I do think it's something we need, especially for accessibility, for our playgrounds and transportation, making sure it is a holistic approach.
There is one legal issue I wanted to point out because it's the way they've changed doing business to the state. The last provision of this resolution, the next to authorize a single signatory instead of the mayor and controller. And what happens is the mayor and controller will execute a document providing that signatory authority, and that's going to be Ms. Kelly.
I did see that she'd be signing off, correct?
Because they only allow one signer electronically to get into the system.
Thank you for pointing that out. Since there's no further questions, I do move to have Resolution 17 of 2022 placed on the legislative agenda for next Tuesday. Thank you. And Mr. Petrowski, can you please read Resolution 18 of 2022? And?
Resolution 18 of 2022 is a resolution authorizing the submission of a grant application to the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources, C2P2 Rivers Conservation Subprogram, for up to $1 million for funds to restore and rehabilitate the stream bed of Spring Creek.
Thank you, Mr. Petrowski. Before I move for questions from my other council members, I did have one, which would would be the benefit of this project for Harrisburg City?
This is very much about the health.
Oh, I'm sorry. You were supposed to give me an interview. My apologies. I'm sorry, I started asking you questions before you gave me an interview, an overview.
An overview, oh no, that's okay.
My apologies.
I wanted to take one quick step back and note that there are three applications going into DCNR under the C2P2 program. Each one is under a different sub program. So these applications are not competing with each other, just, just as a matter of record. They're from different pots of money that would be funding them. That was just something I should have said in the first place. This, this one is super interesting and it requires a little bit of background and I'll try not to get too into the weeds. So last year, in the fall, Capital Area Green Belt, they have a very vigorous, robust, energetic, dedicated group of volunteers who've been working for years and years, decades, to raise money for the Green Belt, to keep it safe and beautiful and keep the stream beds and the banks healthy and free of invasive species and just basically keep it a facility that everybody in Harrisburg can use and love. They've done a terrific job. They have recently sort of entered into a very, especially energetic fundraising phase, partly because grants have come down, partly because of the times that we're living in, that they were able to capitalize on. This grant, I'm going to, I'll get to it in just one sec. I'm going to put it aside for just one moment. In the fall, the Capital Area Green Belt applied to a PennDOT program called the Transportation Alternative Set Aside Program, or TASA. And they applied to that grant. It was about $985,000 ask. There was no match required, which is part of why they were so interested in applying. And it was a perfect match in terms of the mission of that grant program for the Paxton Parkway Trail section of the Green Belt, which is heavily used. It's a beautiful wooded area. It's surrounded by a lot of lower income neighborhoods and a lot of those folks use that part of the trail to go to work, to go to school, to recreate. And that trail is almost washed out. It's almost destroyed. So they applied for that piece and it's, it's, again, these maps, I wish I could have more of them or put them up on a, on a screen. It's a, it's a piece of the Green Belt, starts at Market Street and it goes 2,400 feet south to, it ends at about, the project's area ends right around where the Klein Plaza sewer outlet is. It's not a very sexy endpoint, but that's the endpoint of the project. You can't really point to something on the map. There's not like an intersecting street or road. But as, so, and we have, again, every indication that we will get that grant. This grant that we're proposing, that we're requesting the resolution for tonight is sort of a sister project to that. It is to rehabilitate the, the stream bank of the creek that runs alongside the Paxton Parkway Trail section. So this project is actually a little longer. So instead of going just from Market to 2,400 feet south of Market, it goes all the way down to Dairy. So it's a little bit longer. The reason that this is sort of like a star is aligning moment to apply now is that the TASA grant that we're pretty, we're 99% sure we're going to get, will serve as the match for this grant. So there'll be no money from the city being spent on this grant at all. And these grants like perfectly match each other and they're sort of two sides of the same coin of this project. So that's why we're, we're going for this now. And the design has been done by Skelly and Lloyd, both for the trail and for the stream bank. So everything's kind of in motion and we've got a lot of momentum. So, and we also have very strong, in fact, DCNR came to us and said, you guys should apply for the stream bank now because we know you've got this PennDOT thing coming and that's your match. And then we can get the timing to work out and come together. So the benefit to the city is fixing a part of the Green Belt that's really beautiful and picturesque and in, in, in great need of, I mean, this is, we're talking about $2 million worth of work that, that really needs to be done.
Thank you. You've answered my question very well with the overview. That was great.
You started talking, you're like, I just want to tell you everything.
Yeah, well, that's how you should feel, excited about it. That lets us know that, you know, it's, it's good when you're excited about it. So thank you. So I'm going to start down here to my far left. Councilman Rodriguez, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Chair Ross. Just for, to pinpoint the geographical area for the residents, is that the part of the stream runs from Klein Village and then part of Dairy where like the diner is, that part of the Green Belt back there?
Yeah. It's, they talk about south. And it is, it's south-ish going from Market. So the, the first one that you have. Exactly right, exactly right, yeah. So the, the piece of the trail that's going to be rehabilitated is, is shorter than the stream bank, just because there's less of it that needs work. But it goes to about where, from Market to about where Klein Village begins. And then there's a part of the, the part of that trail that's been fixed and that's where the paving starts. So they were going from Market to the part that's been paved.
And is that by any means tied the county into it in the form of my collaboration? Is there any potential for that, being though it's the Green Belt or is that specific Harrisburg area part of the Green Belt?
It's, it's this part of the Green Belt is specifically all in Harrisburg, but for sure, we're collaborating with the county and all of the different, you know, municipal plans and sustainability plans. So it's in, a lot of the, the Green Belt in particular has a very wide membership and set of partners.
Awesome. Thank you for that. No further questions.
Thank you, Councilman Rodriguez. Councilwoman Daniels, do you have any questions? Councilmen Majors, do you have any questions?
Well, no, the question, well, the first question I was going to have was already asked about the matching funds. And I know that, you know, working with some of the members of the Capital Area Green Belt Association, they are very energetic, as you mentioned, and this is a project that I know has been on top of mind for several years. So look forward to hopefully being able to receive a grant and get that work done. Should we be able to receive a grant? What is, do you have an estimated timeline based upon us receiving a grant? Is it going to be a one, two year project or should we receive it?
Yeah, no, my, my best understanding is that the trail will start this year and go through 2023 and then the stream bank will start 2023 and go through 2024. These grants both have, one has a three year lifespan, the other has four. So we have plenty of time to, and to get the timing all right. And I do have to give a shout out to the Green Belt. I think the word that comes to mind is indefatigable. I mean, they're just, they just try, and they're all volunteers and they, they give a huge amount of time and they're really, it's, and they've also raised a lot of money on their own from foundations and they paid for the design. They're really, there's something.
Thank you.
Any further questions, Councilmen Majors? No, okay. Madam President?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
You're welcome. Vice President Green?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Councilman Mattson?
No questions for me, thank you.
Okay, I move to place this in our legislative session for Tuesday. A resolution.
I just want to note, we did get a contact after this was submitted from Capital Area Green Belt, and they have asked us to alter the fourth whereas clause, which we will send down next week, but engineering costs are being paid separately, if I understood them, out of separate money.
So engineering can be one of several things. One of those things is design. The design has already actually been done and paid for by CAGA for this stream bank. There are engineering costs that come down to inspecting the work, signing off on work orders, signing off on invoices, inspecting payrolls, all that sort of engineering work and the inspections themselves. That, that, it does still need to be done and that will need to be done throughout the project. The cost for that has been built into the budget. But the, the way the resolution was worded, it just said the word design. It should probably say the word delivery instead of design because the design part, that specific part has been done.
So does that need to be changed or?
We'll just send down a clarifying language. And just for a matter of public, the, the whereas is a ten, and these things actually aren't the magic words. It's the words after, now, now therefore. So, but it's just for prosperity. So it's stated correctly. It was their comfort level we wanted to satisfy.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Petrowski, can you read Resolution 19 of 2022?
Resolution 19 of 2022 is a resolution authorizing the submission of a grant application to the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources, C2P2 Park Rehabilitation and Development Subprogram, for up to $250,000 for the purpose of raising more funds to develop Phase Two, the Chutes and Ladders Playground and Reservoir Park.
Thank you, Mr. Petrowski. And can we please have an overview on this resolution?
Sure. You're going to get tired of hearing me talking. So this is our third DCNR grant application. This is Chutes, which we all know and love. We have raised the money for Phase One through grants and CDBG and some amount of city money. We're now moving aggressively to raise money for Phase Two. We have a cost estimate for $550,000. That is, that was from August 2021. That is what we're basing this grant application off of. We got a grant from DCED GTRP, which is the Greenways Trails Recreation Program. That just came through in December. That was for 150,000 for this Phase Two of the Chutes and Ladders. Chutes and Ladders complex, our project manager and Parks and Rec would prefer that we call it the Reservoir Park Phase Two, which is totally fair. She knows more than I do about the phasing. But it is the part of the Chutes area that we put in another parking lot, which we know we will need because once the Chutes Playground is complete, we're expecting quite a bit more foot traffic and vehicle traffic, lots and lots more people to come to the park. So we can't, you know, build a park and not have, give people a safe way to get there and stay there and use it. So the parking lot is really important. A tot lot, as, as Dave mentioned. And then the walkways around the whole complex will be reconfigured just because we're putting in some new facilities and they will be made ADA compliant. What am I missing for Phase Two? Right, so the reason I actually mentioned the cost estimate is that with the 150 from GTRP, sorry, so for the match, again, DCNR requires one to one. So we need to, if we're asking for 250,000, which we are, which is the cap for this program, we need a 250 match. The GTRP grant provides 150 of that and CRW is doing a lot of work, especially at the parking lot for the, the green parking lot and the stormwater management, worth at least 150,000. So they will be writing a letter and I've already spoken, we've spoken with DCNR and they, they accept that gladly as part of the match. So we have the match covered and between the DCED grant, CRW's work, and then 250 from DCNR, we should have full funding for this phase. That is our, that is our goal.
Thank you. I'm moved to my far left for questions. Councilman Rodriguez, do you have any further questions?
Thank you, Chair Ross. Yes, with the increase that we'll be seeing because of, of course, everyone will want to take part in the new park and as do, Reservoir is a beautiful area, so a lot of residents look forward to it. Are we considering adding additional park rangers or any other attention, ones that elevates a bit to assist at high volume times? Or even starting the conversation at all?
Yeah, I'd love to start the conversation. That'd be great.
Absolutely. Thank you. No further questions.
Councilwoman Daniels, do you have any questions?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. Councilmen Majors, do you have any questions?
Yeah, so I know we're, I know we have a lot of different phases to get this done. The overall amount that we're looking to raise for the Chutes and Ladders Playground is, I know this is a grant that'll get us still a part of the way there. I forget what the overall number was, if we have a number, or how much it's going to do to complete that.
So the overall number that we're expecting for this Phase Two is 550,000.
Okay.
Yeah.
So the overall number for the, the whole project that we're doing, that you guys will see, because the public's going to see Chutes and the tot lot and the parking lot as one, one project, even though it's split up into two phases. We're looking at about a million dollars for those, those projects. But as Rebecca's stating, that's how it's broken down, is into about 500,000 to 500,000. So this second phase, you're looking at 500 and the first phase was 500.
Okay. And in terms of the phasing, so Phase Two, a Phase Two anticipated completion, I know, because we've been talking about this for, you know, a little while now, that we got Phase One moving, but in terms of Phase Two, should we be successful? I guess what is the performance period? I'll, I'll phrase it that way.
I think the best answer I can give you guys, just not to mislead at all, is the mayor will be doing a groundbreaking, a ceremonial groundbreaking on April 4th. Pretty sure it's on the 4th at 11 o'clock. And that is for Phase One. So we, we will obviously make haste as soon as we get this. And once we start the project, it'll, it'll keep moving, but just getting to this point has taken a while. So I, I don't want to give you a, a date and then I'm completely off of that timeline.
Right. So that's the beginning of Phase One, right? Talking about the Phase Two performance period, should we receive the grant? So similar to Resolution 18, we're looking at a, a, you know, a three to four year, well, excuse me, two to three year performance period for us to spend the money down. Should we be successful on this piece? Is it another two year performance period for us to be able to do Phase Two? Or is it, I just want to know what that performance period is going to be?
Sure. So this, this grant's due April 4th. We will hear sometime in the summer if we're successful. And then there's a couple of months where you negotiate the paperwork. The money likely would be, everything would be done and in place. The money would be actually released in 2023. Then we would have three years.
Okay.
Yeah, so we do have, we do give you a lot of time. They're also very good about, as long as you're making progress and you're meeting your deadlines and, and you're clearly, you know, trying to do, to do right by the grant, they are very good about extensions if you need them. And DCNR and CRW are very involved partners, so they'll come out and they'll work with you and they'll look at something, say, oh, did you think about this? So they're good, they're very good partners to have.
Okay, thank you. And then just because you opened up the, the door, Mr. Baker. So we have 4/4/22 as a groundbreaking date for Phase One. Estimated time of completion for Phase One?
The estimated time of completion. We'll say this, we're hoping that we're complete a little bit before we get the funding for Phase Two. So it, it, it really depends on when we get started. And, and again, I'm, I'm hoping if everything goes well, we're looking at, at less than a year construction to do the work. But it's, you know, the world we live in right now, again, I.
Right, no, I understand with, with costs and, you know.
And once we get started, we can give council an update. But I think really getting started is what's going to be the, the, the push. And then obviously, if we have any sort of needs that, as far as like actual physical structures, because we have put in purchases for the actual items, like playground items. But if we do run on shortages of anything, then, you know, that can hold us up too, but we can absolutely keep you guys up to date on things.
All right, thank you. No further questions right now. Thank you, Chair Ross.
Yep, thank you, Councilmen Majors. Madam President, do you have any questions?
No questions, thank you.
You're welcome. Vice President Green, do you have any questions?
No, I don't have any questions on this. Thank you.
And Councilman Mattson, do you have any questions?
No questions for me, thank you.
Mr. Petrowski, I move to put Resolution 19 of 2022 on the legislative agenda for Tuesday. And that concludes the work for Department of Parks and Recreation.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ross. Next, we will move to the work of the Community and Economic Development Committee, Councilwoman Daniels.
Right, Resolution 14 of 2022 is a resolution approving a preliminary final land Right. Resolution fourteen oh twenty twenty two is a resolution approving a preliminary final land development and lot consolidation plan to rehabilitate. An existing building into a twenty-two unit multifamily dwelling and construct a parking lot with twenty off-street parking spaces.
Someone from the administration identify themselves and describe the history. Resolution, please.
So I'm Jacob Bowen from the Planning Bureau. So this project is involving the rehabilitation of an existing building into a twenty-two unit multifamily dwelling. And they also plan to construct a twenty space off-street parking lot in the back. So at this, this project site, essentially it's an existing building and they're not building something new. It's an industrial style kind of warehouse type building. There's also four existing units in another building that's kind of attached to this building. So the structure is actually located fronting Jefferson Street. And then the, there's a vacant lot behind this building. It's between Schuylkill and Oxford Street. So this lot consolidation aspect will be consolidating that parking lot, well, future parking lot into the same structure. So they went to the zoning process back in November where they needed relief for was a few off-street parking spots. And also for the multifamily use, which was in the institutional zoning. So now they're before here for the land development and the law consolidation. So at the Planning Commission meeting back in February, they recommended approval for this project with the following conditions. Condition one, the applicant will reconstruct or install new ADA compliant sidewalks along the frontages of all properties associated with the development. Additionally, the applicant will ensure that the proposed curb cuts in parking area be elevated to the height of the surrounding sidewalks. So that vehicle access is treated as a driveway and not a through street. Condition two, the applicant will coordinate with the Department of Public Works to confirm the appropriate size and location of refuse collection on site. And update the billing accounts to reflect the new use. Condition three, the Codes Bureau will perform a thorough inspection of the interior of the building to ascertain whether work previously conducted on site related to the existing units. Is in conformance with building codes. So the Planning Commission, they recommended that this be approved for the following reasons. Reason one, the proposed adaptively reuse of the commercial structure will create an additional eighteen residential units. Which are needed in the city in general and ensure the existing structures and uses inside are brought into better conformance with the city zoning and building codes. Reason two, the proposed project will provide a more appropriate use for the neighborhood than the previous storage use in unpermitted auto oriented businesses on site. Reason three, approval of the proposal will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood and in fact will bring benefits by redeveloping an deteriorated structure. Providing new off-street parking for residents, installing and improving sidewalks adjacent to the property and improving the overall appearance of the entire project site.
Were there any comments regarding the parking, the relief of the parking?
So at the Planning Commission meeting, I believe there was one individual as a property owner nearby. They did have a mention of it. Basically for this application for the parking relief, it was for a guest parking requirement. So each unit. Yeah, they, sorry, there's actually two parking shots short essentially for the units. And then the guest parking requirement was additional three. So there was one concern. It was more about the traffic flow actually of people accessing from Schuylkill and Oxford Street. But because of, part of the reason we and the Plan Commission recommended approval with the parking aspect was. If you go along those side streets along Oxford and Schuylkill, there's pretty ample on-street parking. So we thought it was pretty, pretty reasonable request, at least from a planning perspective. So originally, I mean, the building's well over a hundred years old. So was that? Immediately. Okay. Yeah, I'm getting back in history there. So the applicant might be able to answer that better for the actual industrial part. I believe it was just storage. And I'm, I'm not sure if they had any unpermitted uses. It looks like they did, but there was nothing like registered in city records. But part of the, it's kind of two structures. One of the other structures. There was, there is actually some existing units in there, which is four. Also, they didn't have rental rent registration for that. So it's not like on the books, but you can kind of just go to the property and see that there's these units were there. So they're actually adding eighteen new units in total, even though the project is for twenty-two units. Yes. And also like the, on the Schuylkill Street lot, the six fifty-five Schuylkill, that was been a vacant lot for quite some time, like. And there was a lot of code issues there with, before they purchased it with a lot of trash and just debris that's been built up there.
Do you mind introducing yourselves and explaining the nature of the project? What you, what you envision the project to look like once it's completed and timeframe in which you think the project would be completed?
Yes. Good evening. My name is David Teffley from DNF Realty.
This is Dale Hare from K D three. And.
Tom Godfrey.
Tom Godfrey from Dalwood Engineering. I'm planning on taking the property and redoing the whole inside and the outside of it, putting. Nice units in there and fixing the outside. Redoing the parking lot with shrubbery and. Good accessibility in and out of the parking lot. I'm thinking roughly around a year we should have it done. Depends how long the process takes. This is my first. Big project in the city.
So it looks like you came into ownership of this property in like twenty best year?
Yes, yeah.
And do you have a sense of what was previously done in this property?
It was used for, the, the main area that I want to turn into the apartments was used for storage. That's all was in there when I, when I bought it. And that's what's in there now.
There weren't people living there?
There is some tenants there, but I'm talking about the big area that we're gonna be basically developing. That's used for storage right now.
So you'll keep the existing units as a?
Yes, yes.
Those are four units?
Four or five, I think. It was four that the city, city had record of four existing apartments. At the corner of Schuylkill and Jefferson.
Can you please speak into the mic?
I'm sorry. Yeah, there's actually four existing units and at the corner of Schuylkill and Jefferson, it looks more like a residence that's tacked onto that building. Those were existing and the city does have record of them. An occupancy when we were going through the, the planning, you know, going through all the zoning information.
And were those units licensed prior? Is there a record of those units?
There wasn't like a recent rental inspection. I kind of coordinated with the Codes Bureau and they had actually some of like the, some of the accounts from the trash records. And also just there's meters on the side of the building to indicate the number of units there on site as well.
Do we know what happened to the prior owner of?
I'm not aware.
Was he purchased? Do you know what happened?
I think he retired. Downsized.
Um, I think that's it for me. No questions. I'll open it, open it up in my process numbers.
Hello. Good. Thank you, Councilwoman Daniels. Good evening. Just a question, I guess a follow-up, cause I got a little, a bit confused. So there were four tenants before you bought the building, but they're not a part of. Your building or are they a part of the building that you're going to be reconstructing into apartment?
He's gonna flip the drawing.
Okay. Needed a visual. Yeah. Okay.
It goes all the way to the corner. Yeah, point, point to the, the corner right there on the corner of, of Schuylkill and Jefferson is where the four, the four existing units are.
Okay. So you, are you going to be fixing those units up as well as when you do the other ones?
What we are going to be bringing right now is they are not sprinkled.
Okay.
So by code, you, they need to be sprinkled. So that's what we will, we will be sprinkling the whole building and extending the sprinkler into those four units.
Okay. I guess my main thing is, um, if you're going to be, of course, fixing up the other parts of the building. And then those residents, the new residents who come in have, you know, nice apartments. What about the residents who were already there? Are they, are their apartments gonna be just as nice? Is their rent gonna stay the same or go up? Like, how do all those logistics work if you only put in the sprinkler system for them?
There's things that need to be done. We, we will update them and everything. So it's all the same.
Okay. So you'll go ask them what they need and what they're looking for. You'll inspect them. Okay. My other thing was, well, first thank you for spreading out into the community and redoing and restoring the building that is uptown area. Further out, we don't have a lot of development going out, going on in that section. So we really do appreciate that. My other question was, um, the parking lot. How do you choose who is going to get a parking space? Is it complimentary? Well, you don't have enough to give. All residents, cause I think you're doing twenty parking spaces, but you're having twenty-two residents. So how do you go about who gets a, a parking space and who doesn't? And is there a fee?
There's no fee. I would say. Out of the twenty-two units, you know, fifteen of them are gonna be driving roughly. I, I don't think it's gonna be a full parking lot from what I've seen in other places that I have.
And currently the four apartments that there, none of them I've, that I've been there multiple times, I've never seen any vehicles parked there.
Okay.
So existing tenants, I think right now do not have vehicles.
Okay, okay. I would definitely get a plan B, cause what you don't expect will happen. And then you will have to figure out how do you divvy out those parking spaces. Thank you for making them complimentary and not a fee. I really do appreciate that, but I do definitely think a plan B, just in case the, the parking situation arises, especially with visitors. That can happen too. So thank you. I have no further questions.
Councilman Mattson?
Yes, thank you. So I see on the subdivision and land development application. Five, question five, will you, will you have M W B E participation in the project? If so, what capacity you have not yet known? Will there be any opportunities for local N W B contractors to participate on the project?
Yeah, right now we're working on pulling together a construction budget. And once we have that, and then once we decide that's the contractor we're gonna go with, we will request them to, to do that. As part of the project.
Okay.
On there, we will look to, to, to bring in some, some, you know, subcontractors that would be M B or W B.
And are you working with our small business department and then our diversity inclusionary folks as well?
Not currently, but we haven't gotten to that step. But we, you know, we will, we can get to that.
Okay. Can someone from the administration guarantee that they get in contact with Mr. Singleton and? The gentleman's name is.
Yeah, I'll shoot him an email also. I don't know if you guys are aware of that list that we have as well. I can send you that as well.
Yeah. And then let us know when you're putting out contracts bids, so that way we can share it through our networks and make sure folks have an opportunity to bid on the project.
Sure. It'll be, it'll be kind of a, right now the plan is kind of a, a private with one general contractor and then he'll submit out, but we, you know, we will make sure we do that. And just, you know, too, that actually is part of the design team. Dalwood Engineering is a firm.
Okay. Yeah, just let us know when you select that contractor and when they're putting out bids and we can share it and make sure everybody has an opportunity to participate. Okay. Thank you. That's it for me.
I don't have too many questions. I guess one, just as far as the aesthetics, what are you planning on doing with exterior of the building? Cause it is very industrial looking. So what are kind of some of your plans for, for that to make it fit into some of the, the residential character of the neighborhood?
Well, right now our intention is because it is existing and industrial and there is some other industrial buildings that we're gonna keep the look, but we're gonna freshen it up. Through that and, and it, the industrial aesthetic that's been there for. Hundred years, hundred years or whatever, you know, through there. So we're really gonna. You know, freshen, freshen the brick up. A lot of it is, is exposed brick there that, that we will clean up and we're looking to paint it and the windows. You know, all brand new windows and everything that will, aesthetics will kind of flow with the building. To change it to make it look like a residential building, because part of it is two stories would be. Very difficult to do and very costly to do. So we're gonna try and because that, that aesthetic has been there for, for that long in that neighborhood. We're, we're trying to keep with that, but just freshen it, you know, everything up and clean it up.
Understood. I definitely think the new windows alone would, would add a lot to the building, cause it, it doesn't look very occupied. And then maybe just some, some streets gaping like plants and things like that, just to, you know, bring it up. So it doesn't just look like a, an industrial building. It looks residential. And, you know, you can do that without, you know, redoing the entire exterior of the building. But I suppose what you call freshening up is kind of what I was.
Yeah, we have some, some, in the front of the building, you seem to be aware that now we have to do sidewalks. We'll have a little bit of area that we can add, a little bit of green space in there. And, and you know, some planting and stuff so that'll, you know, it'll blend in a little bit more.
Thank you. That's the only question I have.
Thank you. I have some questions regarding the four existing units and the new units. How many bedrooms do you, are, are the four existing?
Two one bedrooms and two two bedrooms, I think.
The new ones are all gonna be the one bedroom, except for there's gonna be one that's gonna be a two bedroom.
Okay. And what is the range of rent for the one bedroom?
They'll all range from around eight to nine hundred a month.
And the two bedrooms?
Yeah, eight to nine.
Okay. And what would be included with that?
They're gonna be paying their own gas and electric. Everything else will be included.
Okay. So I know you purchased this building last year and it's almost been a year since City Council. A voted to approve the affordable housing legislative package where. The requirement is if a developer is interested. In participating twenty percent of any new units would be deemed affordable for our residents. Given that. Both the existing and new. Units. Will range between eight hundred and nine hundred dollars. May be affordable, affordable for our residents. So either if it was the total of twenty-two, it would be four units that we would require. Affordable and four for the eighteen new. So that wouldn't really change there. I do think the higher range of the nine hundred. Could be challenging, but I thank you for your responses.
Yes, thank you. And. And just going back to a question I was asked previously regarding the four existing units. One was, do you have records, Jacob, when the last time there were rental inspections done or does Codes know the last time any inspection was done?
We looked at the system. I, I can't recall the exact date. There wasn't like a clear, like inspections there with rental inspections. That's why I don't have an exact date. It's more of just what the meter service was and kind of trash service, what we went off of to confirm those units. Cause I, I didn't see active rental inspections going on from the previous owner. Because I, I didn't see active rental inspections going on from the previous owner. Um, in this case, um, these units may have been a bit informal when the previous owner had it. So that was actually one of the conditions that we want and agree on is actually have codes go through and make sure, not just with sprinklers, but with all aspects with the city code. These are going to be up to compliant, you know, with the existing units.
Okay. And then I know you mentioned to the applicant about sprinkling the, we'll be putting sprinklers in the existing units as well as the additional units that are being proposed. Have you heard any feedback from residents in that area about this project? And any of their thoughts or ideas?
No, there were a couple of people at the zoning hearing board meeting and just it was more, the questions they had was kind of just, what are you doing kind of thing? And just, you know, a couple of people that lived in the neighborhood, just kind of curious of what's happening and everything in there. Understand it. I didn't see any, anyone where they were really against the project. I think the one they were, you know, part of it where we're cleaning up the back of that property, there was some masonry walls that kind of stuck there. Actually, if you looked inside, there was a, a frame of a start of a building that never went anywhere. So we're really going to be cleaning up that part of the neighborhood. They did appreciate that. And with getting the, the side, new sidewalks on there, because right now there, there's no sidewalk on Schuylkill Street and well, Jefferson Street is just kind of macadam and everything. And there's no, you know, ADA. So they did appreciate the fact that we were addressing those issues to clean up the neighborhood and make it, you know, a little bit better walkability.
Okay. And then for, and does, this project is, is it also contemplate, and I'd, again, it's abutted by the property at twenty-four forty-five Jefferson, right at the corner of Jefferson and Oxford.
Twenty-four sixty-three is the address. There's another property right beside that, I think.
Right, that, that, that property will still be owner occupied or that's that part, that last project at Jefferson and?
The Blue House there?
Blue House.
Yeah, I believe it's the Blue House.
Yeah, the corner of Oxford, yeah.
I'm in the process of possibly buying that.
Okay.
And if I, just thinking about that, to go back to your question, that's plan B. If I buy that, that will come down. That gets more parking.
Okay, um, and then, uh, I guess similar to a question that was already asked by President Bowers, you know, where, you know, I guess what is the, the sort of target audience for this? I mean, if we're looking at solely one bedroom units at eight to nine hundred dollars or we're looking, I mean, to me, that's going to probably be in, in, you know, individuals or when I look, this is going to be like, I don't think, we don't have a lot of families looking for one bedroom apartment. So you have like a, a targeted group of residents that you think would be best suited for this? This, uh?
It's, it's, I'm, I'm basing it basically on the amount of phone calls that I get all the time for people looking for one bedrooms.
Okay.
That, that's where I'm basing that at.
Okay, all right, thank you. But just to the city, if we can get some of those records on the last time we had, because any rental units, any, anybody go through those units and provide any updates, because they do seem to be?
Yeah, um, the reason I'm a little, is because the records are actually a little like that as well. Because there isn't a clear rental history, which is through rental inspections. So that's why I can't even really give you guys an exact date when it was, or, because it was not a formalized rental units. Typically, when this happens in the city, it was probably before the zoning code, our current one, most likely was done illegally at some point with those four units. And this is, as Asha, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Asha knows this is quite common. It comes up in planning commission.
Okay, all right, thank you. No further questions at this time.
Yes, Chair Daniels, thank you. Thank you, gentlemen, for being here this evening and thank you, Rep. from Dalwood to represent the City of Harrisburg on this project. Appreciate you guys. I just really want to take the time and echo the sentiments of my colleagues, not having those rental inspections and even admitting that it may be some acts of illegal upkeepings of the building. I would definitely advocate for equal amenities. So I think it's just fair as you upgrade the other building, why not the four other units? I think it just makes sense. Um, I understand it could be costly, but Harrisburg is a beautiful city and some of our structures and developments are a bit older. So to your point, it is a hundred years and that's why it should take a little bit more attention as you develop. But also, have you guys considered the overflow from the county assistance office? That's right around the corner at high traffic time. Your parking spaces may get overfilled if it's not manned or tended to or closed off somehow. Not sure if you considered that at all.
Um, to be honest with you, I've noticed the past few months, there hasn't even been anybody in that parking lot. And I don't know if it's because of COVID or what it is. But I did, I did think about that.
Yeah, it gets pretty full during high volume times and due to COVID, there has been a minimized number of applicants or people going in the building, but that won't last too long. So just to forward think that could potentially be an issue moving forward. And when it does get parked, I mean, even the, there's a park right around the corner on Sebastian Radner that will get full. Because, you know, families, when they need resources, you know, we'll have to park where we can to get inside the building. So that's something definitely to keep in consideration. Had, besides that, I just really want to really, really put emphasis on the amenities. Those residents probably have been there quite some time, I'm not too certain. But as they develop, they probably will feel a, a type of way if they're not being tended to as well. And that's just fair. Um, and then also it's just concerning about the one bedrooms. We do have a great amount of families in the uptown area of Harrisburg and, you know, the, is, housing is just a need. Affordable housing is a definite. So even if you could somehow find it in your hearts to comply with the fair housing and affordable housing legislation, that would be phenomenal for our residents. But that, that's pretty much it. Thank you, gentlemen, for being here. No further questions.
When do you intend to start working on the project?
We're, sorry, he's pointing at me. They actually have started some of the, the demolition in the back to clean up that whole back area. We are currently working on the, the drawings that we would need to submit to the building department for that and, and we're in the process of getting that, that budgetary pricing so that once we have that, then Mr. Tefly can, you know, get his financing. So probably, um, at this point, probably looking to start construction probably closer to June. To be honest, till we get, you know, because it depends on how, how long it would take to get through the codes department too.
Um, I would like to give this resolution a little bit more thought. So I wouldn't recommend to put it on the agenda for next week, but maybe two weeks from now, from next week.
Hey, thank you, Councilwoman Daniels. At this time, we will open the floor for public comment. Is there anyone to my left that would like to offer public comment? Oh, excuse me, did you have something else to add, Jacob?
Um, yeah, I was just going to request from the, that's fine. Um, request from the chair that to confirm that the applicants are acceptable of the conditions put forward from the planning commission. Like if they're acceptable, the conditions of approval, there was the three conditions. Um, if they're acceptable, those, just to have it on record.
I, I think that's what I would like a little more thought on.
I mean, the, the applicants, make sure that they're acceptable of that.
That they're acceptable?
Um, of the?
A question to an applicant, whether the conditions are satisfactory to them and they can meet them.
Oh, you need me to ask that?
Yes.
For the record?
For the record.
Yes. Do you mind answering that question?
Yeah, I mean, they were the same ones, Jacob. We had a debt planning meeting.
Yeah.
Yes, we had agreed to them at that time before they
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks.
And then I do just have one question for legal. This isn't going to run into any timelines and automatically be deemed approved, right?
Ten seconds to thought to tell you the truth. May third.
Okay, yeah, so the proposed agenda would be for April twelfth.
Okay, thank you, I apologize, Jacob. Anyone to my right who would like to offer public comment? Please state your name and address for the record.
Joyce Van De Horse Gamble, twenty-nine oh eight Parkside Lane, Harrisburg, PA, one seven one one O. President of Camp Curtins Neighborhood Unit. We came to the zoning board in regards to the Jefferson and Schuylkill project. And we objected to it because of the new development, the state building that's on the Seventh Street. We were concerned about the flow of traffic. We also had went into one of the four units that are on the, that are occupied by him. And there, we were concerned because the unit does not have an emergency exit. When we brought that up, they said they would put sprinklers. But I think in the codes department, you have to have an alternative exit. So that was brought up at the zoning board. Now, to speed it up, from the shootings we've had this weekend, Schuylkill and Six and Schuylkill is one of them. We are concerned about his tenants, that he wants to get into this building because the same tenants that he has on Seventh Street are dissatisfied. They're ex-offenders, they're sex offenders, they're addicts. And we do have three playgrounds in that area. So yes, the community, the Camp Curtain community is concerned in regards to this project. And David Tefly does have other projects that's coming up in that area. There's another one that we have on Division Street, which I'm not too sure where that stands right now. But this is our community concern at this point. And since the, the shootings have escalated by him, we got to scrutinize what he wants to put in this warehouse. Is it going to be a rooming house? And how much is it going to cost? Because from what I've heard, in his rooming house, he charges twenty-five dollars to use the kitchen. I don't even know if he charges any, any rent to go to the bath. So he's very strict and he doesn't do, and there's only one window on the Seventh Street rooming house. So I would appreciate it if you just look most, most closely into this project. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the middle who would like to offer public comment? Anyone to my left that would like to offer public comment? Being and hearing no one, I have a comment and an announcement before we adjourn. So today is Equal Pay Day. The American Association of University Women shared that in twenty-twenty-two, Asian-American, Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander women are paid seventy-five cents for every dollar paid to white men. Black women are paid fifty-eight cents for every dollar paid to white men. Native American women are paid fifty cents for every dollar paid to white men. Latino women are paid forty-nine cents for every dollar paid to white men. We must close the annual wage gap. All women should receive fair compensation for the work they perform daily. The announcement is, uh, the Friends of Midtown has partnered with Levett Henderson to host a town hall for justice meeting that ironically is tonight. It started at six PM and ends at eight PM. It's at HMAP. Looks like council members, if you'd like to attend, we still have time. But I would ask that Friends of Midtown, Ms. Henderson and anyone else that are hosting these town hall meetings, please be considered and mindful of city council meetings. They're also on Tuesday evenings, as I mentioned before. Our calendar is on the city's website under the Office of City Council. So please check the schedule of meetings prior to planning events that conflict. The time is six fifty-five. I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved improperly second. We are adjourned.